Want to welcome all of those who are going to be participating in today's public hearing. This is the third public hearing that we've held. Our first one was in Corpus Christi, our second one was in San Antonio, and this is our third one. We have a very large number of participants in our public hearing today. And so as a consequence, we're going to have to be pretty rigid in enforcing the time, the five-minute time limitation. So those of you who are, who intend to speak, please do your best to state your position and the reasons why within the five-minute time limit. Because as I said, we want to give everybody an opportunity to participate. We can't do that if everyone doesn't honor the five, five-minute limitation that we have. So with that understanding, why don't we have our first speaker, which I understand is Judge Sally Montgomery? Judge Montgomery?
Good afternoon. I don't know how I got to be first. I will watch my time and I guess I called the Commission for Judicial Conduct because I wanted to be sure that I followed the guidelines for judges relative to how we were supposed to testify to the public. And so I won't be making any recommendations. I'm just simply going to give you a little history. To the point, I had such a situation going over 20 years ago that I actually had a national book agent who was going to write a book about it and then decided not to. But the experience was this, I was one of the first women judges on the bench. And we had, let me just say, a chairman of one of the political parties that used to come into our 13 civil district courts. He wasn't in litigation himself, but his partner was. Anytime his partner was about to appear and would wave to us from the back of the courtroom. I pretty much did what I felt was correct and, and sometimes his partner was successful in my court and sometimes not. But the problem was I had other issues. I was, as I said, one of the first women on the bench. I also ended up, ending up with someone who was very prominent and who wasn't very happy when I sanctioned him for discovery abuse for 250 bucks. Who later went on, by the way, to become a judge and became the first judge, I think that the, and I later became president of the, all the Texas county courts. But this judge became the one and only judge, I believe, as a county judge, of which he had later become, that was censured for judicial conduct. And probably would have lost his bench, but I ended up, he came after me and I had to do a lot of thinking about judicial selection. And I determined that if judicial selection was made by those who wanted to be successful in our courtroom, because of who they were versus the facts, that we would end up having a judiciary that would not be doing justice to the public, to just regular people that came into our courtroom. At a very tough situation, I was able to subpoena that chairman. All the other 12 civil district judges asked me to ask him why he felt it was necessary to come and wave to us from the back of the courtroom when he came in and his partner was there, which I did. And he had, basically we candided a lot of things that he had said. And I did a lot of thinking and it's like someone like this would have had a very prominent role in selecting our judges if judges were picked by committee versus by election. And though election of judges can be very messy and sometimes the one that is best qualified is not successful. Sometimes the truth comes out, which it did with this person who was after me at that time. And actually the findings of the Commission for Judicial Conduct came out in September, which is a date that should be familiar with you right now relative to things coming out in our national election. And he became the first, he had become a Republican judge to go down. And I became the first Democrat because I switched parties to be able to come in because those findings were published. So I think, you know, truth will out and with elections, you see these problems which you would not otherwise see with the committee choosing the judges. I mean, that's kind of discombobulated explanation of what occurred. But I just believe that everyone should be careful how their judges are selected. And I think the people need to have the right to choose their judges through election.
Thank you, Judge Montgomery. Just one quick question. You mentioned that you tend to favor elections. Do you favor partisan elections or nonpartisan elections?
I hate to say this, but partisan because they're the ones that actually listen when you go around and you talk to the different clubs and partisan things. Nonpartisan, they, they just aren't tuned in. So when I came back as the first Democrat elected in the county, I had a lot of Republican women who voted for me because since we'd all appeared in front of those committees, they knew it's better. It's not a pretty process, I have to agree, but it's just better than the alternative.
Okay. Well, thank you, Judge, very much. Any questions? Any members of the commission? If not, thank you, Judge. We appreciate you taking your time to appear before us.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Judge.
My understanding is that Hector Flores is not here yet, and so we're going to move on to Roberto Canis.
Thank you. I'm going to read a prepared statement. Thank you Chairman Beck and members of the Commission for inviting the commit, the community to weigh in on the very important issue of our judges. My name is Rob Cognis and I am president of the Mexican-American Bar Association of Dallas. I am also a former criminal court judge. I served from 2007 to 2018 here in Dallas. I won my first three elections and lost my fourth. I'm here today speaking to you on behalf of Maba Dallas and not in a personal role. My members want me to appear before you to state Maba's opposition to any kind of system that selects and appoints judges rather than Texas voters electing our judges. The Mexican-American Bar Association of Dallas is a diverse, nonpartisan association made up of attorneys who are Democrats, Republicans, and independents. Our membership includes criminal defense attorneys and prosecutors, family and probate lawyers, and members of the plaintiff and defense trial bar. It also includes trial court appellate, former, and future judges. We are an organization committed to the betterment of Dallas, its bar, and the judiciary. Maba's founding members came together concerned about the issues of representation, voting rights, and the community's right to select and elect a diverse judiciary. Taking away Dallas's ability to vote for judges would not ensure a diverse qualified judiciary reflective of our community and its stakeholders such as jurors, civil litigants, and the criminally accused. Neither would it ensure accountability, access to justice, or confidence in our justice system. A commission to appoint judges rather than having judges voted into office as they are now would silence our community's voice and disenfranchise voters' rights. Our members believe that many of the problems with our popular vote system for selecting judges can be addressed through legislation such as qualifications to become and remain a judge, stronger sanctions for unethical judges, and adjusting the calendar when judges are up for election. Problems can also be addressed by the local political parties and community leaders in how candidates are encouraged to run and in what steps the parties and community leaders take to inform the public about judicial races. Again, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. While we are opposed to a system where judges are appointed, Maba Dallas has a vital interest and concern for our judiciary and looks forward to the opportunity to assist in any future discussions on areas of concern to the commission. Chairman Beck, I'll give you some time back and I'll be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Canis. Any questions of Mr. Canis? Yes, Mr. Babcock.
Thank you. Hey, Rob, how are you?
I'm doing fine. Good to see you.
Good to see you. Chip Babcock here. We've heard a lot of proposals, obviously. One of them would retain elections but would do it in the form of a retention election. So I don't know how the judge gets there, but once they're there, there's a nonpartisan, non-opponent kind of election to retain that judge. Do you have any thoughts about, about that?
You know, I have done a little bit of research about other communities that do that. Out of everything that I've seen, I mean, that, that would seem to be an interesting proposition to replace what we have now. I think, you know, our, at least for our membership, the biggest concern is just maintaining that the, the community at least has a say whether it's throughout the whole process of the judicial selection or if it's a retention type of system. So that, that's our biggest and most important goal.
Great. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions? If not, thank you very much, Mr. Canis, for taking your time to appear before us today.
Thank you very much.
All right. Our next speaker is Jim Johnson. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Jim Johnson. I live in the Denton County portion of Plano, Texas. I'm a native Texan and I've been a Denton County homeowner for the past 28 years. I graduated from the University of Texas with degrees in economics and business. And I graduated with a law degree from Texas Wesleyan University. I teach as a part-time professor of law at Texas A&amp;M Law School and this is a position I've held for the past 11 years. I'm here only on behalf of myself and not representing any organization. 15 months ago, I announced my candidacy for judge of Denton County's 431st District Court, planning to take on nine-year incumbent Judge Jonathan Bailey. Shortly after that, Judge Bailey announced that he would not seek reelection. In his interview with our local newspaper, Judge Bailey explained that he does not like how judges must run in elections for office. Judge Bailey had been appointed to the 431st bench by Governor Rick Perry in 2011, won reelection without opposition in 2012, then defeated both Republican and Democrat opponents in 2016. Following Judge Bailey's withdrawal, three additional Republicans this year plus one Democrat entered the race for this 2020 election that will conclude a month from today. Over the past year of campaigning, I've personally had the opportunity to attend dozens of candidate forums and community meetings. This judge race has attracted levels of interest that inspire me and convince me that public elections rather than appointment is the best manner of selection. This is my first campaign. During the March primary, more than 54,000 people cast ballots for this district court judge race. Each of the four primary candidates had different backgrounds, different types of experience for the voters to choose from. I think it's important to note that three of us had twice before applied for appointment with the governor for past newly created courts. But none of us previously were even invited for so much as an in-person telephone interview. Public election enabled us to make our case directly to the voters. I received 23,000 votes in March and second and third place finishers each received more than 12,000. Following the primary recently here in July, 15,000 voters showed up at the polls to cast ballots for this little judge election. I'm convinced that Texas voters want the opportunity to elect their judges. And I urge the commission to retain the current method of public election of judges in Texas. Side note, I think it's worthwhile to note that at least in this race, we have bipartisan agreement. Both my Democratic Party opponent and I were asked by the League of Women Voters whether partisan elections should continue. We both said yes. And the final point I would make is that alternate methods of judicial selection, as I'm sure you've received input and have studied, that remove power from the grassroots people and put it in the hands of a smaller committee, can itself become controlled by partisan interests? And the Wall Street Journal had an interesting observation on the Missouri plan in particular, that it's moved the state's judiciary more partisan and that it's doing no favor in making, no favor to fairness in making judicial selections behind closed doors. I thank you all for your time and attention. It's an important issue and I appreciate all the hard work that y'all are putting into this. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Any questions of, I guess, should we call you Judge Johnson at this point?
No, I think my Democratic Party opponent Diana Wetzel would object to that.
All right. Any questions of Mr. Johnson?
Just a general comment if I may.
I'm sorry?
Just a, just a general comment, an interest of interest from the comments you were making.
Sure, absolutely.
You know, and I, Judge, you talk about increased qualifications or removing grassroots involvement. But you said something that's pretty interesting to me, that is appointment. The appointment process on the Missouri plan has become a lot more partisan than elections. And how would you go about trying to minimize the partisanship if we went to, let's say, a Missouri-type of system?
Personally, I don't believe we would be able to find any way to minimize partisanship. I think we're, partisanship is something that we have to live with. And whether it's a small group or a public vote of 50 or 100,000 people, I personally favor letting the public know where we stand on those partisan issues.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Any other questions?
Chairman Beck, I have one.
Yes.
Thank you for your comments. We have discussed, as one of the issues, the difference between smaller jurisdictions and the large city populations. And you're not in a tiny jurisdiction. You may have, have had more voters than you think you have friends so far. However, yours might be a little bit more manageable. Do you see any differences between the campaign that you have run and the one that maybe Judge Montgomery would have had to run in Dallas County?
I, I do, and I see a big difference with my friend, Justice Mike Wallach, who has to run for an appellate bench across, you know, 12 counties. It's more difficult in Harris, Dallas, or at the appellate or Supreme Court levels. And so maybe there will be a different process. All considered though, philosophically, I land in the same place. I would like the public to elect, to find ways to get information to them and as an alternative, perhaps change the underlying qualifications for different levels of judges or maybe even district court up to ensure qualified people are there across the board.
Well, thank you for undertaking the worst experience of your life, which hopefully will turn out to be the best experience of your life, win or lose.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Yes, Chip Babcock.
Yeah, Mr. Johnson, thank you for coming here. How have you financed your campaign? How much money have you raised? How much have you spent? Who did you raise it from?
This, this turned out to be a more expensive campaign than I ever could have imagined. It cost with four individuals $120,000 and I financed that $60,000 with public funds and I was able to raise $60,000. About a fourth of what I raised was from family members. About a half was from my existing clients who gave generously and don't have any issues before the court. I'm, I'm not sure what that says about them wanting to get rid of my services, but they were generous. And then about a fourth came from Republican Party and local law firms. I think with the Judicial Campaign Fairness Act and the limit in Denton County of $2,500 per person, that goes a long way in preventing anything that I saw attempted in my campaign or with any competitors as far as trying to exert influence.
Thank you very much.
All right. Any other questions? If not, thank you very much, Mr. Johnson, and good luck in your election.
Thank you.
All right. Our next speaker, speaker is Anthony Lowe.
Hi, everybody. Thank you very much for having me. It's a great honor and I appreciate your time. My name's Anthony Lowe and I'm a lifelong resident of Plano, Texas, right up here in North Dallas. And I have run and right in this preview, well, right in this cycle during the primary, I ran for a state house seat. And like the, like the previous speaker, I'm a graduate of university, the University of Texas at Austin and from their business school. And right now I'm going for a master's in computer science. So I wanted, really wanted to speak on this issue today. It was really important to me. I am concerned about taking away the right to vote in our system of government. And I'm concerned that the governor or selection committee will pick people that may not align with the values or may not be totally qualified to face the issues in local areas where I live in Collin and Dallas County. And because it's not humanly possible, it's not a humanly possible task for them to know what each locality needs, given how big our state is. It's really diverse. We're hundreds of counties are each different from one another. I would like for us to maintain our ability as locals to choose who we think best align with the values in our local communities. And that's the basis of why I really wanted to testify today. And I was also once a history teacher, so I wanted to bring a little bit of a flavor in for your consideration that the founding fathers might have to say about this if they were with us. And one of my personal favorite documents is Federalist List Papers Number 10 by James Madison. Have it right here in this book that I bought from Costco. And he, one of the, one of the main things that he said was that enlightened statesmen will not always be at the helm. So, you know, I'm just very sure that, you know, Governor Abbott and the selection committee would have a great heart and pick great people with, with their best interests in mind. But they cannot guarantee that in the future, that the future governor or future selection committee will have a good of a heart, as good of a heart or competent of one to pick the right people for these positions. And similarly to what's the passage I just read from said is that even though the founding fathers knew that they themselves had their great hearts, they couldn't guarantee that future office holders would. So they use this as the basis to curb their own powers to make sure to protect our citizens and our government from any office holders in the future that might not have the best intentions. So with the power of expediency to do good, which Governor Abbott or the selection committee might do with their ability to handpick for these positions, in the future also comes the power of expediency to do things that aren't so good when other people come in and have those powers to select for these different positions. So that's pretty much the basis of what I want to say and I really appreciate your time and you're willing to still let me bring my voice to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Any questions of Mr. Lowe from members of the commission? If not, thank you very much, sir, for taking your time to, to let us have your views and express your point of view. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your time, sir.
All right. We had skipped over Hector Flores earlier. I understand he is now available. So, Mr. Flores?
Good afternoon. How are y'all today? Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to speak on this important subject. I, I speak opposed to the whole concept of taking away my right to vote, not only for the Supreme Court, but also who knows, this may be setting a dangerous precedent and there may be other elective office that, that could be right in line to also consideration to take my right to, to be able to vote for those elected officials. I think that our opportunity to vote for both Supreme Court candidates and others, I think is, is a right that's built into our constitution and I think it ought to stay where it's at. One way that we can hold people accountable is when we vote for them and we elect them. We elect those that we believe we're familiar with, not only their, their platforms, but also with their conduct while on the bench. I think these are things that we should not eliminate. You know, the organization I belong to, the League of United Latin Americans, known as LULAC, has a great website, website that also educates not only its members, but other people who want to conduct an analysis of, of both judges but, and/or other candidates. We also have many forums. We also meet with them personally. We interact with them. We can, we conduct virtual town halls. We conduct registration drives and get out the vote rallies so that people know who their, who their candidates are for elective office, but particularly for the Supreme Court and other bodies. We believe in local control and we believe that people should elect their representatives at local, state, and national levels. Again, I will reiterate that one way that we're able to hold judges accountable is when we can also vote them out of office when we agree with the performance, with their performance on these benches. I want to thank you very much for the due diligence that you're doing in conducting these hearings throughout the state of Texas. But I would say that we need to keep the current system in place.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Flores. Again, we appreciate you taking your time to appear before us. Any questions of Mr. Flores?
Chairman Beck, I have a question.
Representative Sherman?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Flores, you mentioned that you're a member of LULAC and that through your advocacy, you provide some type of judge review information, I guess, to your members. One of the concerns that has been expressed throughout our commission meetings has been the lack of knowledge of the candidate's qualifications. Is this something that you currently do and you found some success in providing for your members to be more educated? And if so, how do you track whether or not they are gaining the information or competency regarding these candidates?
Well, as you may know, Mr. Sherman, you represent, I believe, the, the area where, in South Dallas, if I'm not mistaken. And you know that we have an event called Chorizo Menudo, which is basically a breakfast where we invite both elected officials and, and, and others to our meeting that we've had in the past, but due to the pandemic, we're not able to have it since March. So we do, where we actually zero in on the candidates, but particularly those that are running for high office, the Supreme Court is one of those, the appellate court, and other judgeships that are not only in Dallas County but throughout the state of Texas. And we review those candidates, not only their platforms, but also their resumes and sometimes even their decisions to make sure that the people that have risen up to serve in these capacities, that we're able to hold them accountable, the kind of work that they're doing. Like anything else, I think that the ultimate, I think, authority on who should be on that bench ought to be the individual voter in the state of Texas. But particular here in North Texas, where we have had success in electing people of color to almost all of the benches that we have, but also into elective office. And I would not want to change that, sir.
That information, this is my last question. That information that you provide to them, is it partisan or bipartisan?
Nonpartisan, sir. We're a nonprofit, 501(c)(3). So consequently, we have to, you know, be able to look at and invite candidates from, from any party. Actually, you know, there's other people that, that don't ascribe to Republican or Democratic Party labels. And we have people that are independents and from the other smaller parties that do come to our events, not only during these breakfasts, but also meetings that we have. We invite people from both sides of the aisle.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Flores. Thank you, Chairman Beck.
Any other questions of Mr. Flores?
Real quick, Chairman, I'm sorry. Mr. Flores, thank you for being with us today. You mentioned that on the LULAC website, we will find some information about the judicial candidates that are up for election this time and some of the criteria that y'all looked at. I'm looking at your website and I'm, can you, you may not be in a position to do so now, but could you follow up with the committee and direct us to what we could find? Because we're very interested in the qualifications that voters think are important or organizations think are important for our judges. So that would be helpful.
We have a couple of websites. One is the national website. And then we have a Texas website that you can look at. Then the specific, the specific qualifications may not necessarily be on there in detail, but a lot of times we do get information from the judges that they submit them to us where we are able to review those. We do have extensive meetings throughout the state of Texas. And in most major cities, we have about, I think, approximately something like 225 chapters throughout the state of Texas, where we're more active or in the big cities for sure because our, our, the Hispanic population is concentrated around the major the major metropolitan areas. But we are also in smaller uh rural areas where we do have our chapters.
Okay, I don't want to take up, I don't want to take up everybody's time, Mr. Flores. If you could, if you could direct us to that information so we can read it on your website, that would be great. Otherwise.
W W W dot LULAC dot org, and you can go down and scroll down to Texas, okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions of Mr. Flores? If not, thank you very much, sir. We appreciate you taking your time to appear before us and answering our questions. Thank you. Our next speaker is Chandra Washington. Ms. Washington?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much for having me here. I would really like to talk about this issue because it is so important to us, especially um as we see the difference in Texas and how we're changing. By taking away this ability for just normal constituents to go ahead and make that decision on which people will best represent them, especially when we start looking at court, we really are starting to handicap other communities. And just as we've heard before, there are many people who can look at different organizations that say, these are the things that we do to support you making your decision. But at the end of the day, we as citizens should be able to make the decision on who's representing us. And again, who's there on the bench, who's taking some of these actions that really are sometimes really problematic for people's lives. So I'm here really today just to say, please don't take that, that little bit um that step further and and take away our ability to choose as just regular citizens who's on the bench and and who we're standing before, because a lot of the times you're as that representative or as the person on that bench, you're part of the community and you understand the changes, you understand the growth, and you understand how some of the opportunities people have may be a little different than in other places. So that's really all I have to say today. Today, thank you very much for having me, and I really hope that you make a decision that that supports communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Washington. Questions by any members of the commission? If not, you got off easy, Ms. Washington. No questions. Thank you very much for appearing before us. We appreciate.
Thank you.
Okay, our next uh speaker is Miguel Solis. Mr. Solis?
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the commission. I will uh, I'll try to be brief with my comments. I should start by saying that I am not a judge, nor am I a lawyer. Not extremely well-versed on the law. There's one thing that I am very confident in, and that is my understanding of the power of democracy and the power of the vote. The reason why I am uh sharing these remarks with you is because my understanding of where we are right now in the work of the commission is that you all are really intent on finding out about the importance of uh the idea um of either keeping judicial elections or removing elections uh are is to uh the people of, in this case, Dallas and North Texas. And I want to make sure that it's clear that at least on my end, as a grandson of immigrants who came to this country seeking the American dream, but also seeking the ability to be able to make their voices heard in a form of uh government that would allow them to do that. Um, that that was an important concept to them, and it stuck with me ever since. And so when I hear that there may be a move to try to remove a critical element like voting one's representatives into office and or voting for decision makers, uh removing something like that, to me, it it requires people like me and others to let our our voices be heard and to let our opinions be heard as well. My read on this situation is, a- as it currently stands, is that there is perhaps a move to strike elections from the judiciary um due to a a uh and a I have a desire to have more objectivity in the judicial process. Um, but the, what would be s- put in place through, you know, perhaps appointments, I'm not sure would get to the end goal of more objectivity. Because even as we look today at the conversations about Supreme Court appointments, there certainly is a lot of politics at at play. Um, and when, when I look at where we could be and recognize that moving to an appointment process might significantly limit the ability for more people to have a say in who their judges might be, especially for me at the local level. Uh, I am concerned that we may be searching for uh a solution to a problem that I'm not sure actually exists. Um, one major thing that I think is important that the commission recognizes is that when you force judicial candidates and judges, incumbent judges, to get out into the community to secure either the seat or to keep the seat, you're really forcing these individuals to take a good look at what the law is doing to people and how the decisions that they make as judges ultimately play out in their communities. And and I believe that that is the the beautiful uh product of these elections. Um, the Constitution is a living, breathing document made by people, and we in, we, we hope that those judges um as they get out there and look at what this, what the law is doing to people, we hope that that will in some ways help inform the way that they think about this man-made document. Um, so I guess in some, what I would say is, as the grandson of an immigrant who, whose life in many ways was changed for the positive because of the way that our democracy works and the fact that she could vote who she felt would best represent her and judge her as the grandson of an immigrant whose life was changed because of our democracy, any attempt to try to remove the process of voting from a democratic institution, no matter how pure the desires and intentions may be of those who would seek to remove that. Um, I think i- it is in some ways misinformed, but most existentially, it's undercutting our democracy. And so.
Thank you, Mr. Solis. I think your time is up. Uh, any questions uh from any members of the commission of Mr. Solis while we have him here? If not, thank you very much, Mr. Solis. We appreciate you taking your time to appear before us, sir. Thank you. Our next speaker is uh Andrea Thomas. Ms. Thomas?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, Chairman Beck and the Judicial Selection Committee for the opportunity to speak before you today. My name is Andrea Thomas, and I am a twenty-five-year resident of Lancaster, Texas. I am the wife, the daughter and granddaughter of men who served this country and who love this country and who fought for freedoms both at home and abroad. One of those very freedoms being my constitutional right to vote. As a black woman, I understand the history and current efforts of disenfranchisement and voter suppression in this country. I would dishonor my ancestors and all who fought and died for me to have the right to vote if I did not speak out against the action that could possibly be taken by this commission to take away my right to vote. If judges were appointed by the governor or a commission, we could very well end up with a monolithic judiciary that is overwhelmingly white, male, heterosexual, and cisgendered. A judiciary that at its most fundamental levels does not reflect or represent the diversity of the citizens of this great state. As a diversity, inclusion, and equity professional, I understand the importance and benefit of having people with different backgrounds, ethnicities, gender, life experiences, religious beliefs, educational and socio socioeconomic backgrounds at the table. For it is our diversity that makes us stronger and better. It is our diversity that makes us great. Politics is local, and that includes electing judges. The vote I cast for a judge in a local election could impact my life more than any vote I cast for president. For those of us who were not born into the privileged class or do not have access to the rich and powerful, what we do have is our right to vote, which was afforded to us in the fifteenth and nineteenth amendments to the Constitution of the United States and the Voting Right Act, Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five. Seventy-six years ago yesterday, President Franklin Delano Roosevelt said, "The right to vote must be open to our citizens irrespective of race, color, or creed, without tax or artificial restriction of any kind. The sooner we get to the basis, to that basis of political equality, the better it will be for our country as a whole. For these reasons and more, I cannot support any action that would disenfranchise the right to vote for local judges in the state of Texas. Simply put, if my vote didn't matter, why would they be trying to take it from me? Again, I thank you for your time today, and welcome any questions."
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Uh, any questions by any members of the commission to Ms. Thomas? Yes, Chip Babcock?
Uh, hi, Ms. Thomas. Um, we have uh received information uh that, you know, these these uh surveys and polls that uh that members, particularly of the uh communities where people of color uh lack confidence uh in our judiciary in the state of Texas uh because the campaigns are funded by largely lawyers, uh big law firms, and then companies like insurance companies that have a lot of business before the courts. Uh, do you, do you share that uh fear or lack of confidence in the justice system because of uh because of the way the money uh flows to these campaigns?
Well, I absolutely believe that anytime you have um a lot of money coming into an election, um that it does definitely put regular citizens at a disadvantage, um and that our voices are not heard.
Do you have any idea, any thoughts uh about how we could uh consistent with retaining the right to vote, uh do something about all the money uh that is coming, again, largely from from one source?
Well, it really is going to require um the will of elected officials to realize that by having all of this money in elections, and I know elections are very um expensive. I just or, you know, heard earlier how much, you know, an an election costs, and I know these elections are very expensive, but it really is at the will of elected officials to take it upon themself, themselves to say, you know what, I'm not going to accept this money.
Yeah. Thank you so much, Ms. Thomas. I appreciate your remarks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions of Ms. Thomas? If not, thank you very much, Ms. Thomas. We appreciate you sharing your views with us. Thank you.
Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Okay, our next uh speaker is Michael Watson. Michael Wetson, excuse me. Mr. Wetson?
Um, hi, it's, it's, I'm not telling you, I couldn't start my video. Hi, I'm Michael Wetson. I am um a local business owner of a small business in Plano and a resident of Grapevine, where I live with my husband and our seven-year-old twins. Um, I recognize several of the names on the screen from my time when I was um vice president of one of the larger uh democratic clubs in Dallas County, um Stonewall Democrats of Dallas. I was also um the leader of probably the smallest democratic group in Dallas County, and that was Copel Democrats. And um I'm here representing just myself, but um thought it was important as a grassroots person to to say that the involvement of the judges throughout the election process um gave me and um those of us in the democratic clubs access to the judges that we never would have had in any other way. Um, it it made them into real people and um really, I think if they were appointed, we'd never see them. And so I found that to be absolutely invaluable uh when we started our surrogacy journey in two thousand and thirteen and um had to suddenly deal with um the courts in Dallas County. Um, actually, was familiar with the names of the judges and knew that the judiciary uh was reflective of the community where I lived, which might not have been exactly the same as um how it would have been if it was appointed by um someone in Austin. So uh, that's really, the other people have said the other things I wanted to say. I would finish by um saying that um Texas is a large and diverse state. And I think that the voters will do a better job of selecting and um and making sure that we have a judiciary that reflects that diversity.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wetson. Any questions by any members of the commission?
Uh, with Chairman?
Yes, Senator Hinojosh.
Yes, uh, thank you, with the chairman. You know, I I I like to comment about um judges having the campaign and having to meet and shake hands with people, ordinary people, working people, all types of people. Uh, I guess uh certainly would make a judge a lot more um sensitive uh in listening to the different type of cases uh for the court. Uh, is that your opinion, Mr. Wetson?
Uh, yeah, I absolutely think that it um would make judges more sensitive. I mean, they might not have had a reason to understand um a gay family going through surrogacy, having not interacted with us. Um, but I will say that that we had almost as much interaction with Copel Democrats, where there were eight of us, as we did with Stonewall when there were, you know, a hundred or more.
Well, you know, sometimes campaigning can be a very humbling experience. If you go out, have to eat tacos and uh early morning uh when you're cold or you're, you're chorizo. So um, anyway, I think we're comments, Dr. Wetson. Mr. Wetson?
All right. Any uh other questions of Mr. Wetson? If not, thank you, sir, for taking your time to provide your views to us. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Our next uh speaker is Robert Burns, Judge Burns. Judge Burns, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Okay. Um, I gotta start my video. I'm sorry. Uh, my name is, my name is Robert Burns, and I'm Chief Justice of the Dallas Court of Appeals. I'm a lifelong Dallas County resident. I've run successfully for the Criminal District Court Number One uh in Dallas County three times, so I served twelve years as a district judge. Or in unsuccessfully in twenty sixteen statewide for the Court of Criminal Appeals. And then in twenty eighteen, I ran successfully for this bench. So I've been in, been through five elections, uh have won four of them. It seems to me that uh Texans have a strong preference for elected judges, and so I'm going to uh make some comments about maybe some smaller changes that could be made. I don't think that uh that the Missouri plan, for example, I don't know that that would ever uh uh pass uh would be a, would be voted for. So I'll just make some small, I uh make some small ideas, none of which I'm going to necessarily endorse, just uh food for thought, something for the commission to think about. Uh, Judge Conyers mentioned calendar adjustment, and I think what he meant by that was here in Dallas County, uh we have about six benches that are up for election during the presidential cycle, and over fifty benches that are up for election in the, in the gubernatorial cycle. Um, and so I think it makes it really difficult for the voters to keep track of so many uh judges in the gubernatorial cycle, and so perhaps making an adjustment to the calendar to where uh there was more of an even uh displacement or dispersment of the uh benches in each uh cycle might make it that easier for the voters to keep track of of the judges. Secondly, um, we have a a system in Texas where uh it's just pure random luck uh whether you get top ballot placement uh in the, in the primary. Um, and at least in Dallas County, uh political operatives would tell you that's good for two or three points, being the first uh place on the ballot, and uh that seems to me like that uh is too much on luck and and not so much on 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 educated voters. Uh, and it seems that ballot placement ought to be something that the commission should should address, especially in the larger counties. Um, perhaps the incumbent could be placed at the top, uh or at least an elected incumbent could be placed at the top of the ballot uh to make it easier for voters to know who the incumbent is, because right now there's no, there's no way for a voter to know who's an incumbent. Um, another thing I think that the commission should think about is uh is is the idea of a nonpartisan uh retention election after after a judge has uh withstood a successful, uh maybe two cycles through the general election process. after a judge has withstood a successful, maybe two cycles through the general election process. Maybe at that point, a retention election might be a good idea. And then finally, the final point I would make would be for the, for the commission to consider recommending that before somebody becomes a district judge, that they have ten years of relevant practice in the area that they seek to, to run for. You know, a district judge that, that's never tried a jury trial in their whole life, I, I don't know how qualified that, that person is, especially if they've only practiced law for four or five years and they've never tried a jury trial. It just seems to me like that's something the commission could, could address. So those are the only points that I wanted to make, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. And, and thank you, Chairman, and thanks to the rest of the committee for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you, Judge. They're interesting suggestions you make. Let me ask a question. With respect to electing our judges in Texas, I mean, I think, as you may know, we're only one of six states that elect all of our judges. And the question I have, would you favor a partisan election system or a nonpartisan election?
Well, I, I think partisan. I think, I think there's a strong, personally, I mean, if you're asking me personally, I think partisan. But I, I think, I think making a change to a nonpartisan election is just, I don't know that's ever gonna happen in Texas. It just is my, my kind of amateur observer of Texas politics. I don't know that that's, that would ever succeed in passing. You know, so anyway.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Chief Justice Phillips?
Chief Justice Burns, good to see you again.
Good to see you, sir.
I believe that the urban counties all have the technology to mix up the names so that each voter's ballot is unique.
Yes.
And what's top on my ballot may not be top on yours.
Yes.
Would you favor that type of recommendation for counties of over a certain population?
Yes, I would. You know, I think that's a carryover from a hundred years ago when a typesetter had to do a manual setting of the, the printing press to do the ballot. And now that with computerized printing presses, it should be very easy to make, you know, if there's two people on the, on the ballot, every other time you're at the top. Yes, but, but I also, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. I do have one more question.
Well, I would just say that, you know, I, I don't, it's just a thought, but I don't know what the harm would be in, in a successfully elected incumbent being designated or being at the top.
That was my next question. There have been several proposals to us that, that maybe I hadn't thought about, even if everybody else on the commission had. But, but one is that several states do designate who is the incumbent. And they may differentiate between appointed incumbent and previously elected incumbent. Then some states let every candidate make a brief description of who they are. You know, board certified trial lawyer or formerly jailed judge who's complete, successfully, formerly jailed lawyer who successfully completed probation, whatever you want to say, eight words or less that you think, that doesn't go to an issue, but goes to describing who you are and your qualifications. Do either of those ideas appeal to you as something that would help voters in an urban area kind of make, wade their way through these long ballots?
That's, that's the first I've thought of that. I, I, I'm sorry, without, without, just sort of shooting from the hip, I'm not sure how I would, if I would endorse that or not.
Our report's not due till December thirty-one, so if you have any thoughts, just.
I'll email you.
All right. Any other questions of Judge Burns? If not, thank you, Judge, very much for your.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna sign off. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
All right. Our next speaker is Catherine McGovern. Ms. McGovern?
I have unmuted, but I'm gonna rely on Megan to make the, the video work or not work. All right, here it comes. Hi, I'm Catherine McGovern, and I am appreciative for being able to express my views on the, to this commission. I wanted to give you a little bit of background. I have been a member of the bar since nineteen sixty-nine. I graduated from the Georgetown University Law Center in Washington, DC. I was admitted not to all of the courts and the Supreme Court in the, in that year. During the period between nineteen sixty-nine and nineteen eighty-one, I practiced in seven different federal agencies, which gave me the opportunity to see the difference between practicing before appointed judges versus not. Then my family was, moved, did move to Arkansas and then to Texas. I became a member of the Texas Bar in nineteen eighty-seven. And then since that time, I have practiced in the federal courts and in the state courts here in Texas. I was retired from the United States Attorney's Office with Northern District of Texas, Dallas Division in April of two thousand and eleven, but continue to have my own solo practice. I get that background because I had been very interested in the question that is being presented. Do we get, do the people get a better judge because it's appointed versus elected? I don't think so. And I don't think that the Texas Legislature apparently had a belief that there's a problem with the system in Texas right now, because as you look at the language for HB thirty forty, you find that there's no statement that this is commission has been put together because there is a problem with the quality of the judges or that the legislation, the Texas code doesn't have, or the judicial code doesn't have the way to deal with a judge who is perhaps not qualified or not doing what he or she is required to do, and that is to provide justice to those who appear before the court as citizens or as attorneys presenting cases. I think we all expect that whomever is sitting in the judicial position is there because they have made an oath to God and man that they will do justice. That is what we expect of them. That is what I, if I were petitioner before court would expect. That's what I expect every time I go into a court. Now, a lot of the issues that have been expressed seem to deal with really issues that the legislature should have had the will could deal with. For example, money. Clearly, there's too much money in our political system, and that needs to be addressed. But that's not, that is a problem that is not created because of the way the judges are appointed or elected. It is a, it is a reflection of the way that perhaps we have moved as a society since Citizens United opened the door. Similarly, if you were to say, well, I will appoint it, and therefore you're not going to have a problem with money. Well, that's not, in my experience of over fifty years, gonna prove anything because of the fact that generally speaking, a person, a lawyer, who is appointed to be a judge, is not appointed solely because they happen to be very intelligent or have any other qualities. It generally is going to be, who do you know? If you look at the way HB thirty forty is set up, these commission participants are selected by people who have a certain political party for the most part. And I don't know why we would expect that if we were not electing judges, but simply having them appointed by some committee, we would find it different. I'm not saying that the Democrats are better or the Republicans are better or the Green Party or the Libertarian Party or whatever. I'm just saying human nature is human nature. So we are better off to leave to the citizens, the selection of the judges, to have them come before the citizens as one expects them to, to speak to various and sundry clubs within the county or the state that they're going to be seeking elective office in. The issue of how much money can be spent and who can give it is something the legislature can deal with. I don't know whether or not the Judicial Conference or whatever, the State Bar would have any authority to put any limitations on the issue of money. That's a question. I do think, though, that there should be a legislative requirement that anyone who wishes to run to be a judge should have a certain number of years as a licensed member of the bar and not having been convicted of a felony. It seems pretty basic to me. But also, if you're going to be a district court judge, where you're going to be hearing case trials, that's what district court judges do, then you have to have had ten years or five years, whatever seems to the commission to be appropriate, experience actually trying cases. If you're going to be an appellate court judge, it seems to me that you need to be in a district court and that you have to have a body of record of your decisions, which have been considered by district and appellate, appellate courts. So that I, citizens could understand how well you follow the law and apply the laws to the facts before you. These probably are not, I don't think they're complex suggestions. I think they're pretty obvious suggestions. But that is what I think the commissions should do. I don't think you have a problem, certainly one that was not identified in the legislature, legislation that enacted this commission. But I do think we have some collateral work that commission should recommend in terms of who is qualified to be a judge and what the expectation of performance might be.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. McGovern. We, the issue of qualifications of our judges, both at the district court level, the county court level, and also the appellate level is a subject that a number of people who appeared before us have raised. And as you know, the minimum requirements for a judge are set forth in the Texas Constitution. For an appellate judge, I believe it's ten years of experience and thirty-five years of age. For a trial judge, it's basically twenty-five years. And if you assume they're gonna go to law school and so on, you're probably talking about somebody aged twenty-five, four years' experience, may not have ever tried a lawsuit, as you point out. So these are issues that have been raised by many others, and it's something that we're struggling with. All right. Any questions by members of the commission to Ms. McGovern? If not, thank you very much. We appreciate you taking your time to appear before us.
Mr. Chairman, I know that I've used my time and you graciously listened to me. I think that the commission should consider in its recommendations addressing the two points that perhaps all the other points, but particularly whether there is a need to amend the constitution to achieve the, the goals that, that you've set, you suggested, I've suggested, and apparently many others have also.
Right. Thank you very much. We appreciate you taking your time to appear before us.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Suzanne Wooton. Ms. Wooton?
Good afternoon. Hopefully I pushed all the right buttons properly.
We can hear you and we can see you.
Yay, success. So, good afternoon. My name is Suzanne Wooton. I'm actually the former elected district judge of the three hundred and eightieth District Court of Collin County. I may very well have a different perspective than a lot of our speakers, a lot of our judges, because when I ran in two thousand and eight, no one had ever even challenged an incumbent district judge, let alone defeated one. I defeated one in a landslide in the Republican primary. I will tell you, it was not a wonderful and loving feeling. I was not the insider, I was the outsider. And although I had been the treasurer of one of our county court judges in the Republican primary, I wasn't a big party person because I felt that judges should be independent, neutral, unbiased, not swayed by any party's platform. So after I defeated the incumbent, this is, this had been a predominantly one-party county for a very, very long time. I was unopposed in November. I will tell you that the, not only did I find the fact that judges had to compromise their principles and their integrity, judicial candidates, not judges, I'm sorry, I misspoke, judicial candidates to go to these different party forums because you had to identify with a party is alarming and quite honestly, just deplorable. I will tell you that I think that judicial races should still be elected, but they should be nonpartisan. And I'll tell you, whether or not I have opinions about South Korea, North Korea, really have nothing to do with how I'm going to preside over a, I was general jurisdiction, criminal case or a civil contracts case. I was approached more often than not during the election process, and all a lot of the people want to know is my position on a couple of platform topics. They expect you to pledge your allegiance to the platform, do all these things that, in my personal opinion, absolutely flies in the face of being a neutral impartial jurist. We ask our jurors, when we instruct them to not let bias, prejudice, or sympathy affect their decision-making, we ask the same thing of judges who sit as a trier of fact. I can tell you that either the candidates go ahead and compromise their principles and make a position on something that very well may be in front of the judge in their court, or they aren't elected. And it's pretty openly known that that's how you're treated. So I feel like what's happened is that because of the party affiliations, we have lost sight of the fact that these candidates should be qualified not just for having years of practice, whether they're trial lawyers, whether they know what a courtroom looks like, but also on the fact that they can actually be neutral and impartial. When I ran, I went everywhere. Even though I wasn't well-received at some of the party functions, I went everywhere. I went to small-town Chamber of Commerce meetings. I went and met voters. So some of the speakers have talked about how judges should go out and meet the voters. I completely agree. Because you do not know who's coming in front of you unless you're out there speaking to them. But my position is, and I've always said, even when I ran, that judicial races should not be partisan. I think it really compromises the oath judges take as well as the principles. I mean, you, we have so much going on right now in the world. If judges and judicial candidates cannot be impartial or have the appearance of impartiality and neutrality, I'm very concerned. I mean, I experienced it personally, alarmed. I'm still saying it to this day, and I do not believe that appointments help either, because then you tend to get candidates who may have zero experience but have some kind of political connection to the powers that be. So that's my personal feelings about judicial elections slash selection in Texas.
Thank you very much, Judge. Chief Justice Phillips, I believe, has a question.
Yes, Judge, I have two questions. We hear a lot of concern, particularly in the urban areas, about nonpartisan elections as, as making it virtually impossible for a candidate to get your message out to the voters if you don't have the help of some party workers and, and these already kind of pre-existing meetings that you referenced of interested people that you can go to. What would you think about the idea of cross-filing? That is, that every judicial candidate would be listed in both the Democratic and the Republican primaries? So you go to twice as many groups, and in the age of YouTube, you maybe wouldn't, it would be wise not to take a position on every party platform issue that comes up.
Honestly, I had not thought about that. I will tell you that when I was elected, some of our other district judges who were unopposed asked me how I got two or three thousand more votes than they did, and back then it was straight ticket voting. So, and I expressed to them that I had gone to the, the other party meetings and the businesswomen and all the other people to meet voters. And that, I think, is what pushed it over to get more votes. But as far as appearing on both ballots that way, honestly, just getting people to get down ballot to begin with now, without the straight ticket voting is a challenge, but I think people will find a way, similar to how we're now using Zoom in the age of COVID. I think the voices will be heard and people will find a way to get out there.
And my second question is, you're, you're a strong advocate for the benefits of campaigning and helping both the judge and the constituents understand each other, as long as judges can successfully abide by the Code of Judicial Conduct without being punished for it. You also mentioned, and it interested me, that there had not been a judge challenged in your county in a long time prior to your race in two thousand and eight. What would you feel about Chief Justice Burns' suggestions that incumbent judges at some point be removed from the open partisan ballot and run to keep their jobs in a yes or no election? Where every judge is gonna get voted on by the voters.
So some type of sort of a hybrid elected slash retention?
Yeah, like New Mexico has, or actually Illinois and Pennsylvania too, initial election, reelection by retention.
You know, I don't think that's necessarily a bad idea, because then you've had at least a term, maybe two, to show what you've done on the bench, whether you've actually upheld the law and treated everyone similarly and with justice, you know, however you want to describe it. I think that's not necessarily a bad idea, because what we don't want are people challenging good district judges or county court judges or Court of Appeals incumbents. good district judges or county court judges or Court of Appeals incumbents just to do it. I think judges should be challenged only when they need to be challenged. So that may not be a bad solution, having a couple, one or two terms and then a retention type of situation. That may solve some of those problems.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, Chip Babcock.
I'll yield to Senator Hinojosa if he's got a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Senator. Okay, well, Senator Hinojosa and then Chip Babcock.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, Chip. Well, I'll be brief, you know, I thought it was pretty interesting dealing with our single-issue groups that in some campaigns can make a difference between winning or losing a campaign. So Ms. Wooton, how do you suggest we handle that? Should we prohibit judges from completely committing to respond to a question from a single-issue group such as right-to-life? They ask you, are you pro-life, do you support right-to-life, are you against abortion? It's one of the most common single-issue groups that we encounter in campaigns. Of course, it's very different running for Texas Senate or Legislature or Congress compared to a judge, because a judge shouldn't commit either way. So how do you think that ought to be handled?
Well, that's a good question, because that's exactly one of the things I personally experienced, which was people asking, what's your position on, are you pro-life, are you pro-choice? And the problem is, as a district judge, we have judicial bypass. That could very well come in front of your court. And it's challenging to find a good answer, aside from, you know, I'm restricted under the judicial canons of ethics, I cannot have a predetermined position on any topic that the court could hear. Well, people don't like that answer. I mean, that sounds like your typical lawyer, well, in some circumstances type of deal, but I'm really not sure how else, because I think the judicial candidates and judges have to stay above that fray. I mean, it is a position of authority and respect, but also humility and impartiality. I'd love to know a good, great suggestion on how to avoid it, but honestly, I would think if any judge is going to go out there and violate the canons of ethics and promote themselves as the pro-life or the pro-choice, either way, it's problematic. I think that means that particular candidate could very well just be swayed by whatever political affiliation they have.
Maybe we should have harsher sanctions for judges to go out and commit to an issue that's being pushed by a single-issue group?
Well, that's a good question. I will tell you, it's just very disheartening and alarming that people would compromise their own oaths and integrity and principles just to win a place on the ballot.
Well, one more quick point. You know, when you have a, let's say, Supreme Court justice nominee being questioned by the Judiciary Committee in the United States Senate, those judges never ask questions directly. They never answer, I'm sorry, they never answer a question directly. They slide, glide, and duck. And I wish maybe some of our candidates running for election for a judgeship ought to be able to be more, a lot more evasive, so they don't get pinned down and really violate the canons of ethics. But thank you very much, I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
And I'm Chip Babcock.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Judge, thanks for being here. And I'm following up on Senator Hinojosa's question and Chief Justice Phillips and the chief justice justices, I should say. Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the United States Supreme Court struck down the so-called announce clause in the canons of judicial conduct, saying that it was okay for a candidate to announce their position so long as they didn't promise that they would rule in a particular way during, once they got on the bench. So there's a distinction between the announce clause and the promises clause, and even, there are even some questions about whether the promises clause is constitutional. But right now, it's in our canons, the announce clause is not. What is your experience from having run for office for judge? Did you hear other judicial candidates announcing their position? Were you frequently asked to announce your position? Because I think after the Republican Party Minnesota versus White decision, you could have done that without violating the canons. What was your experience?
Sure. So for one thing, I'm not sure if there's as much of a difference between the state ethics and what the federal government may have done, because the last time I checked the Texas judicial canons of ethics, there is a provision about openly making a stance on abortion, for example. So if that has changed, that would be news, I will certainly look that up. But as far as that goes, candidates have the right to have personal opinions, of course, but what you cannot do is express that personal opinion in a way exactly like you're saying, Mr. Babcock, that it kind of leans toward where you may rule regardless. And that's where the problem lies, because you get these different partisan groups, that that's their main sole issue. And although an important issue for many, many people, it cannot be the only issue. And honestly, if I said I thought everyone who rear-end somebody should pay a million dollars in damages in a personal injury suit, well, gosh, then everybody who accidentally rear-ended somebody who stopped would think, well, I'm not voting for her. I know that's potentially a silly example, but I did have it happen a lot. And so I could privately tell them my personal opinion about the topic, of course, but I could not make any public position about it. I couldn't be the pro-choice, the pro-life candidate, and we've had a couple here do that. I just think it sends the wrong message that you are not going to listen to every case on a case-by-case basis and apply the law that you took an oath to uphold. Now, our legislators can change the law. I mean, if you guys want to undo judicial bypass, then the judges who sit in those cases are going to have to abide. But that's really the difference. You've got the legislative, the judicial branch, and I don't know that all the voters understand that, because there's all these allegations about activist judges. Every judge I know applies the law within their discretion, if there is discretion. So I'm not sure if I answered your question, I apologize. But yeah, I did personally experience it quite a bit. That was the main issue that everybody wanted to talk about, and I would just answer it privately, not publicly.
Totally responsive answer, Judge, thank you.
Any other questions of Judge Wooton? If not, Judge, thank you. We've pummeled you with questions, and we really appreciate your responses and all of your input, which are very, very helpful to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Paul Stafford. Mr. Stafford?
Yes, I was waiting for my video to start up and my computer to unmute. Thank you so much, this is Paul Stafford. Thank you so much, Chair Beck and members of the commission, retired chief justices, senators, representatives, citizen members, and attorneys. I speak for myself in this testimony to your esteemed commission, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to your commission, or the commission, and the opportunity that this republic affords for us to have such a dialogue to a commission by citizens and concerned stakeholders in our judicial process. And I have to quote, or at least paraphrase Barbara Jordan at this time, to say that my faith in the constitution is, in fact, whole, it is complete, and it is total, and that why would I be compelled to speak to a commission when I could be doing other things, like other people who have spoken before us? Well, it's because we shouldn't sit by idly to watch the diminution or destruction of our constitution in any way. My opinion is that many of the commission's recommendations and all of its members are well-qualified to inform the commission on possible causes of action, courses of action in this regard. I've reviewed, even before this commission, the O'Connor Plan, the Missouri Plan, other types of promulgations. I see that you have many posted on your meetings and agenda website. But my experience is, as an attorney for twenty-six years, as a person who was a former prosecutor early in my career in two different counties, Denton and Dallas, worked in a corporate legal environment for about six years, were at two large law firms in this Dallas-Fort Worth area, have owned my own firm, and am currently the proprietor and managing partner of the Stafford Law Firm, P.C., have tried over two hundred jury trials in multiple jurisdictions, licensed in four federal districts, including state of Texas, pro-hawked into many others, have been the president of two bar associations, J.L. Turner Legal Association and the Dallas Bar Association, am active with the State Bar, and chair-elect of the African-American Lawyer Section of the State Bar for 2021, God willing. I've also come into contact with me people in those regards and viewed many opinions about our judiciary, the status of it and the integrity of it. And I think that is the reason that you would be compelled to speak at such a hearing or such a commission gathering such as this, because of the imperative of maintaining that integrity and the ability for folks to feel like they are in some way invested in their judiciary, both from the judicial system, what it promulgates, as well as the method of selecting our judges or electing our judges, especially in this time of social justice reform, awareness, and racial justice. I think that that is what is required to maintain the integrity of the republic, to listen to its citizens. I also work these days a lot with children, and children also play a part in what the commission's doing, because we are shaping the minds of future voters, as well as folks who are going to be coming through the system. And so that's very important. And so I wanted to take this opportunity to at least give that preface and to give these remarks as a person who has not only been a practicing attorney for several decades, but also taken leadership positions in state and local bars, and has a unique perspective of both the Dallas community and the other community. I believe that whether the commission chooses nomination or selections or retention elections or partisan or nonpartisan partisan selections or elections, that should be informed by promoting an informed electorate and promoting a sense of goodwill and trust in our system. I think some of the recommendations that could go along with that have already been mentioned, and I won't go into all of them. I think diversity and inclusion is imperative to that equation. It may have been mentioned before, but I think it's important to have judges that reflect our society across various lines of diversity, inclusion, ethnically, sexual orientation, geographical, and otherwise philosophical as well. Qualifications or jurists, judges that are being nominated, relevant background qualifications, relevant experience qualifications, have been meant, I think that's imperative as well, and also believe that campaign finance should be addressed, and that can be addressed legislatively, especially in light of just Citizen United. And so I just wanted to take a bit of time to speak to my opinions of this commission, to thank the commission for doing its work, and to speak to my opinions, which are my opinions, of some of the pathways forward for the selection and/or election of our judiciary, members of our judiciary, and the maintenance of the republic through the trust that it instills in its citizens. And I'm happy to take any questions.
There may be some questions from members of the commission. Any members of the commission have any questions? If not, thank you very much, Mr. Stafford, for taking your time to appear before us. We thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Jim, is it Pikie, P-I-K-I, or P-I-K-L? I can't tell.
It's Pickle.
Okay, got it.
That's not the worst I've had at Butcher.
I apologize.
My name is Jim Pickle. I've been practicing law for thirty-five years in Texas. I'm board certified. I ran for judge for district court in two thousand and sixteen, and then in two thousand and eighteen, I'll get back to this, and then I also ran for the Court of Appeals in Dallas. I think it needs to be repeated here, because it does not appear to be obvious from many of the comments I've been listening to since the beginning of the hearing, but the fundamental question is, do we want qualified judges? Or do we want judges who have the best campaign ads? That seems a little specious, but when you think about it, everyone says they want qualified judges. The issue is, what are the proper qualifications? And I proposed that for thirty-five years doing this job at very high levels, including nine cases at the U.S. Supreme Court, that judicial officers are, or at least should be, fundamentally different from other elected officials. In fact, qualifications may be more important in this job than most others in government. It is a rare member of the public who is not a lawyer, or even who is, who can intelligently determine who is qualified to be a judge, and voting therefore devolves to personalities of tribalism, not legal qualifications. And I witnessed that personally. While law deals with every topic, adjudicating disputes is a narrow, specialized profession. We've heard a lot about representation in the judiciary from various groups, and when our government officials are representatives, they should absolutely be chosen by popular election. That's what it means to be a representative, actually. But judges are not representatives of the people. Judges are representatives of the rule of law. Those two things in many ways are opposites of each other. Judges are frequently called upon to rein in the decisions and actions of the other two elected branches of government. And because those other branches are properly partisan in nature, we don't have a fair, unbiased judiciary. We have a two-to-one democracy if a judge is a partisan. I heard democracy one time explained as two wolves and a sheep arguing over what to have for lunch. We do not live in a democracy. We live in a constitutional republic. In that system, we require objective decision-makers, fair tiebreakers, not just another partisan player in the mix. Many people in favor of partisan elections actively desire to be able to put into office those who, quote, "look like" them, as opposed to how qualified they are. And that is perhaps good in a representative job, such as a state senator or representative, even the governor. I'll give you an example from personal experience. The two thousand and eight Court of Appeals elections in Texas were determined completely by partisan characteristics. Beto O'Rourke and straight-ticket voting caused thirty-two out of thirty-three appellate benches that were up for election to go to Democrats statewide. Now, can a good argument be made that all thirty-two of those thirty-three, all Democrats, were actually more qualified to be competent judges than their opponents? If so, they would have been put into office under either system, election or appointment, right? After all, appointment goes for qualifications, and supposedly, so does the election system. By being elected in partisan elections, the appearance is that they are partisan, or can be partisan, or maybe even are wanted to be partisan. The appearance of impropriety when people are elected based on partisan qualifications is always in question. It has to be, by definition. Only six states elect all of their judges by popular vote. Are they all wrong? The federal judiciary appoints all of its judges from the Supreme Court down to magistrates. Is that wrong? I think maybe they know something we don't know in the six states that are still electing our judges. My opinion is that the best way to select Texas judges, based on having a qualified judiciary as opposed to a partisan judiciary, is appointment by committee. Formation of the selection committee can be done in multiple different ways, as it is all over the country. We need to have more robust qualifications for people who are even able to be candidates for appointment, and then recall elections every six years, nonpartisan, and no opponents on the ballot, thumbs up or thumbs down, with the people that lose office through death, retirement, or getting a thumbs down, get filled by the committee as well. So those are my comments. I know that I am probably the black sheep in this group so far, because everybody else that's testified pretty much has said, oh, we need to elect our judges. But hopefully, I've shown a little perspective on the other side of what that might look like, and I'm stand-ready to answer any questions the committee has. Thank you.
I have one question, and that is, if for some reason Texas went to an appointed system for our judges, we've had two suggestions. One is that there be a commission whereby the governor would name one or more candidates for appointment, and this commission, if you will, would vet those people, qualified, not qualified, well-qualified. And then another point of view is that, no, the commission's role would be to select the candidates and then submit those to the governor on a take-it-or-leave-it basis. Do you have any thoughts at all on which one you think would work better?
I think that, I'll answer your question a little bit obliquely. The idea is, are we okay with partisanship in the judiciary? That's the question. If you're going to let a partisan elected official like the governor make that choice, you are then inserting politics, partisan politics, into the process at that level. So I would be against having a thumbs-up, thumbs-down by the governor, because it is more positively partisan than to have maybe the committee appointed by, you know, half get appointed by the governor, half get appointed by the minority leader in the legislature. half get appointed by the majority or the minority leader in the legislature and one gets appointed by, you know, the railroad commissioner to make it make a non, you know, not even number of 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 committee members. Like I say, there's many ways you could do the committee, but I just feel if we have partisanship in our politics, our partisanship in our judiciary, the appearance of impropriety is always going to be there. Judge Wooton was right when she testified that when you go campaign, I campaigned for nineteen months in the Court of Appeals in six counties among five million voters. I was constantly asked over and over and over, are you pro life? Are you pro the death penalty? Are you pro this? Are you pro that? And that those are the kind of questions you get because the people are not trying to figure out whether I've been to the United States Supreme Court nine times, whether I'm board certified, whether I've, you know, tried thirty five cases and sixty appeals. I never got asked those questions. I got asked partisan questions in in campaigning because they were going to vote on a partisan basis. And that's what they did.
Okay, thank you. Any questions by any members of the commission? Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate your thoughts.
Chairman, thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you. All right, our next speaker is Patricia Bennett. Judge Bennett.
Okay. It's not letting me, it's saying I cannot turn my video off because the host stopped. There you go. Thank you. Okay.
Judge, we can see you and hear you now. Thank you.
Okay. Good afternoon. I was I am Judge Patricia Bennett. I was elected judge of this court when I ran against an incumbent. I I see advantages and disadvantages both to the appointment and the election process. However, when people say that to take it out of politics with an appointment, appointments always, there's always going to be politics in it. And it's actually more of an elitist process where only the people who are connected with whoever's appointed in office are going to be able to participate. The retention process kind of creates the worst of both worlds because you still are going to have to raise funds to defend your bench. The per- under the current process, you kind of have a warning. I, when I ran against an incumbent, I, actually, I started early. I got I was getting, you know, I had to get my petitions out. He knew I was running. He could, he could raise money. I could raise money in a retention election. Someone could literally a month before the election just start a campaign against you. And so you're always going to have to have money in your campaign funds. You're always going to have to raise money. And so I don't believe it takes away from the political process at all. So you have this elitist process of selecting. And I'm sorry, it's going to have to be because you're going to have to be connected to somebody politically. We also need to consider that the current process educates the public. I have gone out, I now am in my second election. Last time I was in a primary, this time I'm in a partisan general election. And it 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 makes us go out and talk to voters. I've actually, last time I talked to Luluck, I've talked to the NAACP. I am a Republican. I I've gone out to speak with all sorts of people, talk to everybody. And I think that's good because I can't talk to them about issues, but I can understand where they're coming from in their lives. I'm a family court judge. I deal with people from all walks of life. I deal with people in all sorts of circumstances. And I think being engaged with the public is a good thing. We also have to consider that on anything statewide, it's going to be controlled by about five or six counties in the state of Texas. There are about two hundred and forty rural counties that are going to be under representing represented in that process. And I think that's going to create a problem. I, you know, this is my second election. First time I ran against an incumbent. This time I have someone running against me. I don't think it's affected my impartiality. Yes, I get asked all sorts of weird questions and you smile and you're vaid and you tap dance. But I don't really think it terribly affects things. I I believe in partisan elections, I in part because I know when I went through my primary, there was a huge vetting process of all the Republican clubs. They sat down and they vetted us and they asked us questions about our qualifications. I'm the board. I was a board certified attorney. I felt like the more qualified candidate won in my election. And so I'm not really, I don't see the problems and maybe I just met with more intelligent party people. I don't know. Now, I will say, right now, my opponent, who someone I still like quite a bit and someone I consider a friend, he actually is somewhat qualified for this bench, but I we do have some people running for us for our civil benches that have never filed a case in civil district court. We have someone running that has just barely his four years of experience. And if we want to consider getting better judges, let's talk about qualifications. Let's talk about, you have to try cases in the court, the type of court in which you're running. So if you're running for a family bench, you need to have tried cases in the family bench. If you you're running for a civil bench, you need to have tried cases in a civil bench. And we're seeing people who could who who are running that don't have qualifications. And so that is where, if we're going to make a change, it shouldn't be to whether it's partisan or not partisan, whether it's elected or appointed. The change needs to be as to the qualification of judges, and we might want to consider lengthening terms a little bit, too. I ran four years ago and it feels like yesterday and I'm running again, which is fine. I mean, it's part of the process and it's process. I happen to be one of those strange people who likes. But, you know, maybe make it a six year term for district judges and eight year terms for for appellate justices, because I know someone mentioned Mike Wallach. I mean, he's having to go through twelve counties to try to get elected and you know, Tarrant County is a big enough county, but when you add Tarrant and you add Denton to it and and Archer, it's it's quite a bit. And I've had friends run for the Texas Supreme Court and Court of Criminal Appeals and having to cover the whole state and that's difficult. But you again, you have judges that have at least had to talk with the people that they are having to decide cases for. I don't think it makes us less impartial. I think it makes us more in tune with the people who are who who are working for. And maybe it's more important in a family bench, so civil bench, but I'm telling you it's important in my bench. Are there any questions or?
Thank you, Judge Bennett. Commissioners, any question of Judge Bennett? If not, thank you very much, Judge, for taking your time to share your thoughts with us. We appreciate it. All right, our next speaker is Judge Whitehill.
Howdy. Hang on. Howdy, y'all.
There we are. We can see you and we can hear you.
Thank you all for being here. Thank you for taking the time to do this. A little bit of background, I'm currently serving as a justice on the Texas Fifth District Court of Appeals. Prior to that, I practiced law for thirty two and a half years with the Gardere Win Law Firm in Dallas, doing complex litigation complex appeals. I will echo a lot of what Mr. Pickle had to say. I think the primary concern should be qualifications in in getting the best possible people to to serve in in these positions. Just a couple anecdotal things. In in twenty twelve, we had David Lewis up here win in a in an election to replace a very qualified sitting justice on our court. I knew David, but he had no business running for for this court, for any number of reasons that that are known. Yet, because he had a better ballot name and a better ballot order, he won. Our court covers six counties, four million people. Roughly between one point two and one point three million people will vote in in our elections. And our jurisdiction is is growing. My best guess is that some number less than one tenth of one percent will actually be informed voters in that election. I was elected to this court, so I I benefited from that system. Whether I ever would have been selected through an appointment system, I have no way of knowing. But I think some version of the Missouri plan will do the best job of making sure that we have highly qualified people to 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 serve in these courts. And my understanding of how that works is is they divide between urban areas and in rural areas. In the rural areas, the judges can be better known in the communities. In terms of a commission, I would opt in favor of one where the commission, and of course, the the devil is in how do you compose the commission? But but the commission recommends a slate to the governor that the governor then has to to choose from. And that would be the best way to probably eliminate politics and political affiliation from the 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 process. That's really what I have to add. Love to answer questions.
All right, thank you, Judge Whitehill. Any questions from members of the commission? Now is our chance to ask.
There you go. Fire away.
Justice Whitehill.
Let me add, I will add. Okay, so I'm one of those odd ducks that kind of enjoy getting out and talking to all these people and all this stuff. And so you talk to probably the one percent most active grassroots people out there and they are clueless about what the Court of Appeals is, why it's important, how we affect their lives every single day. And I do my best to educate them. I do a lot of discussion about the judicial system and how it works and why it's important and how we affect their lives. But if these people don't understand it, I don't know how the the average voter has it has a chance.
All right, Commissioner Jameson, I think you had a question.
I did. Hello, Justice Whitehill. I think your chief, whose last name begins with a B, was in favor of having run alphabetically. And I'm not going to ask you whose name is W, how you think about that. But if there were a a commission, and you say the devil's in how you put together the commission, some states will bake in some of the concerns that have been raised today and on other days in terms of representation. Either someone said earlier, y'all, the commission may not know who lives in Denton County, the commission may not know my community, the commission may not know. And in some places, that's that's baked in. Do you have any thoughts about that?
Yes, I mean, one, for example, I think trial courts are different than appellate courts. Trial courts are much closer to the people and and they're going to be involved in in finding facts and exercising discretion. Appellate courts aren't. I think that no system is perfect, that the federal system is not perfect by any stretch of the imagination, and our system isn't perfect by any stretch of the imagination. But I believe that a system that focuses on qualifications on the 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 front end blind to to party affiliation, and if you have a properly constructed commission, bar leaders, academics, whatever the composition is, they will be better able to focus on actual qualifications and and less on partisanship. And then you remove the partisanship by saying, this is it. You you've got five people or X number of people, Mr. or Mrs. Governor, to 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 choose from. There, you know, we all know in the past, there have been some judges that just are not good judges and you got to find a way to to remove them. In in an election process is 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 can be a good way to do that. Historically, that was done in in primaries. At least up here in in Dallas, primaries were a good way to 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 get rid of some judges that may not have been good judges. So I I what I like about the Missouri plan is is it sort of combines the best of of two worlds. It gives you qualified people on the front end, or at least a better chance necessarily of getting qualified people on the front end, and it gives you a mechanism to to remove people who are not doing a good job and and shouldn't be there. Did that answer you?
Okay, thank you, Judge. Chief Justice Jefferson.
Justice Whitehill, it's good to see you. In addition to qualification, do you think it's important for there to be diversity of all kinds in the judiciary, whether it's practice area, gender, race, big firm, small firm, that sort of thing? And and if so, how do you achieve it under a commission type system?
Well, I'll give you the lawfully answer to that. It depends. I I think certainly, everybody, no matter who they are, brings certain things from the community, from their experience with them, and and those are valued. And and that is important. I think that that tends to be more important in the trial court where you're actually making the the first level decisions on finding facts and and understanding how people operate in exercising discretion, for example, in family court, you know. I I think that is really, really important in there. In the appellate court, at least the way I operate, I try to to be completely blind to those things and and just to focus on the rule of law. And and if there are policy problems, that's up to the legislature to fix. But I think the commission can take that into account when they do that. There there will people that will apply. The commission will interview people and they can factor that into the process and and bake that into the system.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, Commissioner Babcock.
Thank you. Hi, Justice Whitehill. But following up on the on Chief Justice Jefferson's, what if we changed to a commission system and five years into it, the nominees and the people placed on the bench are all of one type? You know, they're all, you know, suburbanites or they're all white males or they're all, you know, black females. I mean, by then the die is cast, how do you fix it?
Well, again, that goes back to composition in terms of of the commission. I think that if you have a diverse commission and you have limited terms, there will be turnover there and that problem will resolve itself.
How do you how do you assure a diverse commission?
Well, that's getting back to the devil's in the the details. You know, I, for example, if you focus on presidents of of local and rural bar associations, you will get diversity there. Maybe you bring in the the head of the R.L. Turner Legal as a position or similar position in 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 San Antonio so that you can create rules for how you compose the commission that will then bring those values, right? I I think everybody needs to be, if we're going to have a successful, productive society, everybody's voices need to be considered and and have an opportunity to be heard. And I think you can do that in the way you go about composing a commission.
Sure. Thanks, Justice Whitehill. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Oh, I'm sorry, Representative Sherman?
Yes, I have. Yes, one question. Justice Whitehill, by the way, seeing your campaign signs, they look great.
Thank you.
First one to have your campaign signs out and certainly had a lot of visibility out there. I was looking at one of your quotes and you talk about judgment and judgment is the intersection of experience and common sense. The intersection of experience and common sense. And when we are looking at currently the prospect of appointment, we know by experience that those appointments do lack the diversity that we get in the election process. And so, you know, I know you mentioned the Missouri plan and certainly the Wall Street Journal has written about that and reviewed it. But how do you avoid that partisan selection? When you look at sometimes, these appointments are made only after the the elected official knows the political views, those partisan issues that they stand on before they will appoint that individual as a judge.
Thank you for noticing the the campaign signs. Also, thank you for visiting the website. I appreciate that. I would be love to have Paul Stafford be a commissioner. I don't know you, but you might be a great commissioner as well. I'm sure that there are members of our society from different ethnic backgrounds, different genders that would all have valuable inputs into the selection process. My guess is and again, I think this is more important at the the appellate level than the than the trial court level and then then probably more important maybe in in Dallas, Houston, San Antonio, Fort Worth, Austin than than mineral wells. But when you have Paul Stafford or some other representative of a community, Paul's qualifications, background, experience are unquestionable, right? There will be others like him that you can put on the commission and they will factor into that. I think i- if you give it to the governor, no matter what party it is, it happens to be the governor at that point in time, that governor is going to present a slate to a commission that's going to look like a lot like the group the governor wants. Whereas if you have a diverse commission presenting a slate to the governor, it's going to have a better chance of highly qualified people that we would all want to have on the bench. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Hey, Representative Sherman, do you have another question?
No, that's it, that's it. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you very much, Judge Whitehill. We appreciate you answering all our questions. You've been very, very helpful. So thank you so much for appearing before us.
Happy to do it. Thank you all for doing this.
All right, our next speaker is Judge Eric Moye. In the interest of full disclosure, I first met the judge when he was a summer clerk at Fulbright and Jaworski, and Judge, it seemed like it was just two or three years ago, but we both know it's a lot longer than that.
We, we both had beautiful, massive heads of hair. I, I don't know what happened. It seemed like only yesterday. So good to see you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much.
Okay, well, thank you for taking your time to appear before us. We look forward to your remarks.
My pleasure. Members of the commission, good afternoon. My name is Eric Moye. I'm finishing my third term as presiding judge of the 14th Civil District Court sitting in Dallas. I'm also the presiding judge of the civil courts, having been selected to that position by my colleagues on the district bench here. I've been appointed to the bench by then-Governor Ann Richards, and I've also won contested elections four times. I'm speaking for myself and also the W.J. Durham Judicial Council, which is the organization of African-American judges in Texas, and I'm in support of the continued popular election of judges. The Texas Constitution, which many of us have sworn to uphold, states in two salient propositions. Article one, the preservation of the right of local self-government. And Article one, section two, which reaffirms the notion that the political power is inherently placed in the people of the state. Many of the propositions which have come before this commission advance here to permit the executive to appoint or otherwise designate judges fly in the face of these two propositions, and they should be discarded by this commission. The very purpose of many of these proposals is to strip from Texas citizens their fundamental right to vote for their elected representatives. Judges are the elected representatives with whom more Texans interact than both of the other branches of government put together. Texas has a long history of citizens jealously guarding the right to participate in representative government. For this commission to recommend the removal from the citizenry of the right to choose these representatives is troublesome in the extreme. Banning citizens from choosing their representatives, preventing the participations of citizens in the state and selecting their judges is, I believe, anti-democratic. Moreover, the Texas Constitution provides for three co-equal and separate branches of government. The passage of proposals which strip voting rights would eviscerate that principle and consolidate government and, and much power into the hands of a single individual. Thusly, not only would the governor run the executive branch, but the judicial branch would become nothing more than a subdivision of the executive. Another speaker earlier talked about the notion that often judges are called upon to challenge, to determine the propriety of the acts of the executive. That puts judges in an incredibly difficult position. Review of the Voting Rights Act of 1965 indicates that these proposals arguably violate Section 2 of that act, which prohibits the dilution of voters of the, votes of the minority. Here dissolution flows not from subtly packing particular voting block with other voters, but by overtly changing the individual votes that count, and the voters who count. This proposal could aptly discard, described as gerrymandering on steroids. And one wonders whether this would pass constitutional muster. A friend of mine sitting in the Capitol a few years ago cautioned against pursuing a particular course of action because of its optics. She cautioned that as much as, as much as the process matters, as much as the ill to be addressed matters, and as much as the results obtained matter, we have to be aware of the optics. Not only must you do what is right, it must look right to the citizens of Texas. In that spirit, the optics of these, these proposals is troublesome. As in every election, some individuals dislike the outcome. What we are seeing is that because of the purported power of some dissatisfied, the votes of a majority of citizens are being discarded. The duly elected judges will be removed from office, replaced by single, by a single individual without concern for their votes. Many observers of this exercise are cynical, but they would not be wrong to think that what we are seeing here is that when someone who has power is no longer winning, the rules of the game change. That's not the civics lesson that we want to teach. A week from today, we commence early voting. We tell all of our citizens that, and our children, that elections matter. We cannot honestly continue to say that if we enable, enable the governor or any commission to eliminate the votes as one person may individually choose, substituting his or her will for the will of the people. All Texans cherish the right of self-government. Those who decry the inability of individual citizens to make intelligent decisions about whom they should vote, I commend the wisdom of former New York Governor Al Smith. The only cure for the ills of our democracy is more democracy. I encourage you all to reject any anti-democratic attempt to subvert our democracy by ignoring the most fundamental character of this republic, and that is the right to vote. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Judge, this is David Beck. I guess one question I have, you're the first one to appear before our commission who's mentioned, at least to my recollection, the Voting Rights Act.
Yes, sir.
And the question I have is this, Texas is, as our understanding is, is only one of six states left that elect all of their judges.
Right.
And to your knowledge, has, has these, the appointive system, the Missouri plan, in any of these other states that have a commission type approach or an appointment approach been challenged under the Voting Rights Act?
That's a question I do not know the answer to. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, any questions by members of the commission? Yes, Commissioner Babcock? I've long wanted to ask Judge Moye a series of questions. The first of which is, do you hold it against the O'Mallies, as I do, for moving the Dodgers out of Brooklyn to Los Angeles?
Well, that's a very good question. You know, actually, since I was a, an across-the-street neighbor of Willie Mays, I'm a little bit more offended about the move from the Polo Grounds out to Candlestick.
Well, we both stand offended for different reasons.
To be sure.
Judge, thanks for your remarks. There, one of our prior speakers today made the point that the judiciary and judges are different than the executive branch and the legislative branch, that they have different functions, they do different things, they shouldn't run on positions, or they shouldn't, they, they shouldn't be beholden to political parties. Do, do you have a comment about that?
I don't, I don't know of anyone who does not believe that a judicial officer should not be beholden to any individual or any political party or any other group organized, disorganized, or otherwise.
Do you think our system, our current system creates the impression that our judges, I'm not saying they are, because I don't believe they are, but that our judges are beholding to powerful industries, lawyers, and big law firms, and PAC funds that are in support of particular judges or parties?
I think some people do, and I think much of that that I've seen stems from the anecdotal. So someone will say, well, I was involved in a case, and the judge's brother-in-law was actually one of the lawyers, and I didn't get a fair shake. In, in an institutional sense, I, I don't see as much of that.
Yep. Thanks, Judge.
Always a pleasure to see you, friend.
Yeah, great to see you, my friend.
All right, any other questions of Judge Moye? Judge, you got offline.
Well, you know, I'm, I am certainly okay with that. Thank you so much. I appreciate you putting the fix in for me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much for taking your time to appear before us. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you all for your work. Everybody have a pleasant day. Please stay safe.
Okay, thank you. All right, our next speaker is Domingo Garcia. Mr. Garcia? Mr. Garcia? He may have dropped off. Let's move on to Clifton Miller. Clifton Miller? Mr. Miller?
He's here.
Is he here?
Yes, he is. Just a second. He just has to unmute.
There he is. All right, Mr. Miller, you're on.
Good afternoon. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, and to the commission first, thank you for the time you're invested in this very important effort. You, you, you've heard a lot of people talk, and you've taken a lot of notes, and this is a, 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 a work, this is a labor for you, but thank you for doing it. I also appreciate the opportunity to speak before you today. I do have a question to Megan though. What did I do to have, to, to get selected to follow both Judge Moye and Domingo? I'm kind of glad Domingo's not here. I don't know what I did, but here's the deal. I'm Clifton Miller. I'm a proud 1971 graduate of Northwestern State University in Natchitoches, Louisiana, which Texans pronounce as Natchitoches. My degree's in political science and economics. I spent 24 years in corporate America, and my private consulting firm will be 20 years old on December 5th. So I've been on the corporate side. I've been an entrepreneur. And since 1994, I have been deeply engaged in attempting to in, to inform and engage the minority business community, which I refer to as MBEs, and Texas certified, state of Texas certified historically underutilized businesses, which I refer to as HUBs. I hope those terms are familiar to you all.
I had to let you go because I'm about to be on, on next, and I'll call you.
Yeah, so, i- i- and since 84, I, I, Judge Whitehill mentioned the lack of informed, how uninformed voters are. I mean, this is true. The issue of down-ballot voting, at which these races are, is huge, and, and what we're trying to do now, and what we're really focusing on this election with no straight-ticket voting, is, is educating the voter for the need to go down-ballot, because these races we're talking about here, it's been suggested and said maybe, but I want to make it a real point. And what we're telling our, my constituents, my stakeholder groups, is the impact on the quality of life you experience on a day-to-day basis, be it as a businessperson, as a family member, as a, or, you know, between the civil courts, the family courts, and the criminal courts, this is where you live. And you don't even know it's on the ballot. So we're involved in a deep education effort right now, Domingo, with the advocacy to get the, their members to go down-ballot, look at the races in advance. So I, I do want to, I, I serve on the boards of multiple hub and MBE organizations, advocacy organizations, and I chair on several of them, the Public Policy Working Group, and then I serve on the Public Policy and Legislative Committees of several others. These organizations include the American Association, Asian American Association of Contractors of Texas, Dallas-Fort Worth Minority Supply Development Council, Greater Dallas Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, Regional Black Contractors Association, Regional Hispanic Association, and I'm the co-founder of the Minority Business Enterprise Public Policy Institute. I'm speaking today, however, as an individual, because by due process, we have not had an opportunity to get my positions with the leadership and boards of each one of those organizations, so I am speaking today as an individual. I do want to say my comments are not meant to be pejorative. They may be somewhat pointed, but I, I really mean no disrespect to anyone. But to me, to use the federal court appointment process as an example of how we ought to run business, I find it challenging and troubling. That process has been dysfunctional since 19, since the elections in 1966 and moving through with the contract with American. All you have to do is look at the last four presidential cycles in terms of looking at appointments which got held up in, in the Senate, was in office, at federal benches, and to forget, you know, take the Supreme Court. But if you go down and look at the federal court, look how many federal court positions remained open under certain administrations, because the Senate Judiciary Committee wouldn't move them forward. So if we want to talk about appointments as a way of selecting judges, please don't cite the federal court system. Number two, appointments, in my view, are inconsistent, as Judge Moye pointed out, with the concept of balance of powers. And, and we see that now. I think, I think there's plenty of explicit evidence that the balance of concept is at risk from a, from a executive standpoint, depending upon the, the makeup of the courts, particularly the Supreme. And then, in my opinion regarding appointments, it's a clearly linked to ideology. So from that perspective, that's my input on, on the appointment process. I think that finance is not, as, as has been said, it's not limited to judicial races. So if we're going to talk about money and races, you got to talk about money in all these races and not just in the judicial race. Retentions, retention elections, I, I'm not an attorney. I've never practiced in a court of law. I've never presided over a case. Been on a few juries and really haven't been accused of a crime. But retention elections, in my view, tend to indicate an, an issue of preference or entitlement. I, I, that's just, that's just a layman's approach, and I would suggest you treat that matter with, 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 you know, with a sense of how it might appear to others. I think serious consideration should be given to nonpartisan races. And the, the matter of selection commission, I think has has merit, but as Judge Whitehill or previous speaker said, fixing that, the devil is in the details on how you do that. So when you're this far down, you know, a lot of the points you, I would have made have already been made, and I just tried to net it out, Mr. Chairman, and to the commission on things that I, that I observe based on previous comments, what I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any questions? Yes, Judge Jameson?
Thank you so much, Mr. Miller, for being here and for all the work that you're doing with your constituents to try to educate them as to down-ballot races, which is citizen engagement is one of the issues that we are looking at. And you might want to follow up with Megan later, but I'll ask you now, kind of, what, what resources have you had to share with your constituents and can you tell yet what effect it has had on their preparedness to vote, or their eagerness to vote?
Commissioner, it's going to, in my mind, and this is going to be a multi-election process. So what we, one of the tools, some of the things we have now, really are some of the web-enabled tools. And, and with, with no straight-ticket voting this year, these tools become more more important. You know, you can go to Ballapedia, you can go to, that you can go in and actually put your address in and get the ballot for your, for your district, for your zip code, which is a great, but people don't know about it. We know how to go to the web and, and find entertainment and find sports news and do Final Four brackets and fantasy football leagues. We don't, we don't have a clue what a ballot is. You know, an individual, so we're, we're, what we're using now is web-enabled tools. I'm doing two seminars on, two webinars on Thursday, and I've done one earlier, where we actually put the links, it's webinar where we're actually going down and, and putting the live links in the webinar and showing people, and then encouraging them, have your smart device with you, and you can go to this link and, you know. The Secretary of State of Texas, I mean, so anyway, we're using, we're, we're trying to use, we don't have a budget, so we have to use the tools that are out there on the web. That's, that's our, that's our approach. And I'm just going to take a couple of cycles and get people educated today.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Miller, for sharing your thoughts with us. And our next speaker is Mr. Garcia. We skipped over.
Okay. Okay, there you go. Hello, thanks for having me on here. I want to just make a, a couple of comments. If you're ready to proceed?
We're ready.
Okay. I got licensed to practice in 1984 in Dallas County. I actually served in Houston first as Assistant District Attorney before I moved to Dallas, which is my hometown, started practicing. At that time, we had an all-white Democratic male judiciary. They were swept out. They were swept out by an all-white male Republican sweep in eighty-eight when Ronald Reagan was elected. And that happened in Dallas County and actually happened throughout the state of Texas. So we've seen sweeps, and now recently we saw the sweep by Democrats in Dallas, Harris, and other counties that have swept, kind of as historically looking at this. So this happens and is almost always based on a partisan basis as the electorate changes, depending on what's happened. I did serve as a, the Texas House Representative for six years. I was on the Judiciary Committee for six years, and I remember working with Justice Phillips there, working on a nonpartisan election of judges back in the nineteen nineties when this issue first developed. And what we found was overwhelming opposition from Democrats, for example, in the Rio Grande Valley, who controlled, you know, basically the judicial positions at the county level, and by Republicans in Dallas and Harris County, who controlled all the judgeships at that level. So we could never get any traction on the nonpartisan election of judges back in that time period, which we thought would be the way to take the politics of the judiciary. What concerns me now is, well, we have in twenty twenty, probably the most diverse judiciary in the history of Texas. We have women who are serving for the first time in largest numbers ever in the history of Texas. Probably more African-American and Latino judges in the history of Texas that have basically come through the current selection partisan process. When I hear information, statements like, well, we have a lot of unqualified judges now on the bench. I never heard that when it was white males. There were a lot of unqualified, incompetent, white male judges, both Republican and Democrat, who sat on those benches and had to, some of them had to be removed forcibly because of various things. But I never heard the unqualified, you need to lift it from four years to eight or ten years to be a district judge. I'm only hearing it now when now we have women and minorities being elected. The issue regarding the incumbents, look, I get it. A lot of you have fought hard and have served honorably and with distinction in our judgeships. And that is something, but at the end of the day, it's not, the, the position of a judge doesn't belong to anybody or any party. It belongs to the people, and the people should have an opportunity to select their judges in either a nonpartisan manner or as we currently do it in a partisan way. When I hear about, let's do the federal system, let's let the governor appoint. Let's look at what President Trump has done. Of the current federal nominees, eighty-five have been white, eight black, eight Hispanic, only twenty-five percent women. That is a glaring, just lack of diversity on the federal bench under this current president in those three years. That could change. If Barack Obama became president again or somebody like that, would that change? I don't know. But that's really, I think, not a very good way to appoint judges. And then I've always seen bar associations disproportionately tend to be white, corporate, and therefore don't believe African-Americans and Latinos and women are qualified, even though they get on the bench. And we've seen some very qualified, both at the appellate and, and other levels. And I know whether it's Justice Jefferson or any of the other justices, they're just as qualified. So my concern again is that appointments really would be political again, and we would have the same type of gridlock that we're seeing in the federal level when the Senate blocks a judge to Supreme Court because he's a Democrat. Or if you converse now, Democrats take over and they're saying, you know what, we're going to expand the Supreme Court from nine to fifteen judges because it's not fair that the Republicans only got to appoint their three judges and the Democrats didn't. It's, again, you're politicizing the system. And what we should do is try to de-politicize the system where you do have good qualified judges and the opportunity to have a diverse judiciary. I think at the end of the day, that's all we want, and that's what we seek. And a Texas judiciary that looks like Texas is important. Let me tell you why I don't finish. In, in Texas, most Texans of Latino descent believe that the criminal courts are corrupt. They're corrupt because judges disproportionately send Latinos to prison, disproportionately put them on probation, disproportionately give them high fines for minor offenses. And that is seen for black and brown defendants in a criminal courtroom. And I've seen it myself. I've seen innocent people get sent to prison for crimes they didn't commit. And they would might be rot their five or six years before an appellate court might reverse the decision of the district courts. In the civil courts, men and women, especially working men and women, who are suing for a car wreck or a worker's comp case or anything, they think that the, that the stacked against them, that the judge judiciary used to be pro-business, pro-corporations, and against the working men and women of Texas. And they thought that the system was rigged and that the system was against them and that they were going up against another defense lawyer when the judge was on the bench. That has to change. You got to have people that have confidence in our judiciary. Because at the end of the day, the judges are seen, need to be seen as neutral empires of the judicial justice system, not biased as another DA with the assisted DA in the courtroom, not biased as another corporate defense lawyer against them, whether it's a business transaction or, like I said, a car wreck or, or a worker's comp case. They have to believe that the judge is kind of called it down the middle and that he or she has not been brought out by one interest group or the other. Not the trial lawyers with the Texas for tort reform who buy judges too, or not the trial lawyers who are perceived to be getting judges that only support them. They have to have judges that call it down the middle. And that's where we hope we can work with you all to do that. And I hope the commission really strives to do that as opposed to taking a partisan position, either Democrat or Republican. Sorry if that was too much information.
That's all right. Thank you, Mr. Garcia. We really appreciate your helpful comments. Any questions by any members of the commission and Mr. Garcia? There being none, thank you, sir, for taking your time to appear before us. And that brings us, I think, to our last speaker, which is Judge Margaret Jones Johnson. Judge Johnson.
Hello. Hello.
Good afternoon. We can see it here.
Okay, I'm very honored to be able to have the opportunity to speak to this committee. And I thank you for this opportunity. First of all, I'd like for you all to know that I come to you to voice opinions given to me over the years that I practiced in the field of law in Dallas, Texas. I'm also a judge and I'm giving you my opinion. I currently preside over the probate court number three in Dallas County as well as the mental illness court. As a private attorney, I represented juveniles. And I represented people with mental illness in the criminal system, adult and child, and juvenile. What I would like for you to know is I have been taking polls from these clients over the years. And I found that most of them, who are now adults, have always wanted to have an opportunity to cast their vote because of how someone treated them as a judge over the years. Some have trend, had transitioned from the juvenile system into the adult system, and they still were expressing concerns about their ability to have their voices heard. If we move from a system of the people having the opportunity to decide who their elected judges are, then I believe that we will be stifling these young children who are now adults who've anticipated for years to have this opportunity, their rights. Now, with regard to my experience as a judge, what I have found is the people that judges affect in their decision, especially in the probate and the mental illness court, are some of the most fragile people we have in our community. We make decisions based upon the law, which says whether this person has the ability to make rational and informed decisions, not only with regard to their life, but with regard to whether they'll be able to vote in an election, whether or not they'll be able to have the opportunity to drive an automobile. These people depend on their rights to be exercised. And for us to consider by any stretch of the imagination that they have to yield to a committee to make a determination of who they should be voting for is not right. And so as a private individual, I think that we in the committee should always take into consideration how, whatever we take up, how it affects the most fragile fraction of our population. And I've heard no one speak to that. I truly believe that once we all look at the perspective from everyone, from the children, from the people under guardianship, which includes elderly people, mentally disabled, physically disabled people, I think that that will help us balance whose rights are being exercised and whose rights are being hindered. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Judge Johnson. Any questions of any members of the commission? Judge Johnson, you got offline today, not, no questions. You must have answered all of the concerns or questions we may have had. So thank you so much for taking your time to appear before us.
You're quite welcome.
And I believe, Megan, that that concludes all of the speakers that had signed up to appear before us. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So I want to thank the members of the commission for taking your very valuable time to appear for our public hearing today. And I certainly want to thank all those who took their time to appear before us. And Megan, you want to remind everybody about the date of our next regularly scheduled meeting this month?
Yes, it's next Friday, the sixteenth at Timmy.
So let's just make sure all the commissioners have that date on their calendar, our regular meeting. So anyway, thank you all very much. We are adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, David.